All right, I've turned on the microphones.
We good?
All right, I'll call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. First item, adjustments to the agenda. And councillor Lozan?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Like to move item 8C on the agenda to 4G on the consent agenda. And also add an item to the consent agenda, which would be 4H on the consent agenda. And that is addendum five to the purchase and sale contract between the city of Berry, Donald Kane and Olivia Dutton. Pretty self-explanatory in the manager's memo, I assume, manager, this is simply a reflection of the flood and we're kicking the dates forward. So if we could add that under 4H and authorize the manager to sign, that would be great.
Works for me and I have a city manager.
So it'd be 4I would be I emailed council, a request for approval of a contract with Sanborn Head for geotechnical expertise. So it asks for that approval to execute that contract. And 4J would be, Adam, I didn't get to email council about, but I think it's pretty straightforward. We need to ratify acceptance of the bylaw modernization grant. Council approved our application for this grant in October 2022. It was awarded in February 2023. We never got approval to accept the grant per the grant's policy. And it came up today because Janet was working on the RFP. So we'd just like to ratify that acceptance as item 4J.
Works for me, any other additions or changes to the agenda?
End of brief executive session for collective bargaining.
All right, anything else? All right.
Yes, Acting Mayor.
Sorry.
Sir. I think there's a slight error in the meeting minutes from last week.
Well, we haven't gotten there yet. So motion to approve the agenda?
No, we don't move.
Okay.
Just make the adjustments.
All right, we'll move on to visitors and communications. Anyone here?
Former Mayor Lucas Herring.
In a bucket hat.
Is it? Mayor talking to a former councillor who's acting as mayor. I'm here today as a member of the Berry Lions. The Berry Lions have been serving Central Vermont since 1938. We are known for our focus and sit on hearing, no pun intended. We assist community members who can't afford glasses and pay to have donated hearing aids refurbished. We conduct vision testing for hundreds of Central Vermont students annually. Each year, we collect thousands of used glasses that will be refurbished and sent to many third world countries. We also donate to many other local, national, and worldwide organizations. So speaking of donations locally, I noted at city council meeting a couple of weeks ago that the Berry Lions would be providing food, water, clothing, and household goods to those impacted by the flooding. We were able to disperse these items due to Vermont District 45, which is the body that the Berry Lions are a part of, being awarded a $10,000 grant from the Lions Club International Foundation, LCIF. Mark Tetro, immediate past president for the Lions, offered his business as the distribution site for these materials. The community has always been generously supportive of the club's fundraising efforts, which the Berry Lions elected to make a substantial donation back to the Berry City community this year. Last Tuesday, August 22nd, the Lions presented a check for $10,000 to Tom Lozan, a Berry Lion and member of the Flood Relief Committee at our annual steak dinner. But wait, there is more. Lion State Governor Travis Wood attended, heard the local challenge that Tom and Karen had provided to propose matched fundraising efforts up to $50,000 by August 31st as that deadline. He stated that the Berry Lions should request additional funding from the Vermont Lions charities. So we did last Thursday. And Woody Stoddard, he's the Vermont Lions Charities Treasurer, has responded that they have committed another $5,000 to the Berry Community Relief Fund. So we will continue to find ways to support Berry and the rest of the Central Vermont community. If you do have any questions, would like to reach out, maybe you'd like to join, or inquire about other services we provide, you can contact me directly at barylionsclub@gmail.com. Any questions?
No, just thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
And in the spirit of competition, that would, I guess that would make the Lions Club 15,000 in the Rotary. You're Rotarian, aren't you?
Yeah, but I'm not a good Rotarian.
Oh, okay.
Nicholas is a good Rotarian.
We appreciate the support, Lucas. On behalf of the Community Relief Fund, we just appreciate the support. It's incredible how people have stepped up. I think we're going to go way over the $50,000 challenge by August 31st. No thanks, no small thanks to the Lions Club, to the Rotary Club, and to so many other people who are donating. So thank you very much.
So does that mean you're raising, you're matching up a little bit higher?
You need to talk to Karen. I'm not allowed to make those decisions. I had an unfortunate incident with a credit card and I'm no longer allowed to carry them or cash or checks.
So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Any other visitors and communications? All right, moving on.
Excuse me, I would like to speak virtually. My name is Alexander Rayburn.
All right.
Yes, I am here, I was speaking with Carol Dawes earlier today, and I am here to bring up the possibility of the flood-related landslide buyouts to be put on the agenda for the next town, city council meeting. I know that, from what I just heard, that there's the potential to ratify the contract for Sanborn Head and Associates going on in tonight's meeting. So I'm not sure where that is in the process, but myself and three or four other households are left in this particularly unique lurch and are suffering tremendously while there is no action.
All right. Manager Storley Castro?
Hey, Alexander. Yeah, so we, I think we know there's going to be a series of buyouts. I certainly think, my personal opinion is that certainly the two homes on Pike Street are excellent candidates for it. What we're trying to understand is, and the reason we have Sanborn Head, is to understand what the actual, the impacts of that landslide would be, right? Like, I think we all know from a layman's perspective, many of us who have seen that slide, that it looks very dangerous. What we need is an expert to tell us what its impact would be, how imminent it is to fall. And then we also need to know what any potential mitigation would be to, so that we could preserve housing, because that's another crisis that's facing the city. So we're waiting for Sanborn Head to tell us what those, what that analysis is. What we expect to hear is, is what we've, many of us have seen, which is that is a very perilous slide. We don't, none of us know the impact of its imminence, which is why the houses have been red-tagged. And we also expect to receive a very hefty price tag on a mitigation remediation fix. All of those things would, I think, provide us the data points that would allow the city and the council to probably reach the conclusion that a buyout is the best solution. Because if the price tags for the mitigation are what we expect them to be, it wouldn't be worth the city's resources to save two homes for that price when a buyout would be more, a better option. So I know it's challenging. We've been, you know, we need that analysis before we can make that decision. I think we can, everyone who's looked at it is concerned about that slide. We just don't have like a professional assessment of when's it going to give, how widespread will the impact be? And if there are any ways to save those houses, how much does that cost? And once we have that, I do believe that those two homes would be prime candidates for buyouts. That's my personal opinion.
Yeah, thank you for that information. Do you have any idea on the timeline of how long Sanborn Head and Associates might take to get you that information?
So the Sanborn Head is estimated about four weeks to go from their analysis to their report to us. And that's because they are actually, and this is in the, this is in the contract materials in the packet, they're actually focusing most intensely on Pike Street. So they are actually doing ground samples, boring samples, they will be on the ground there measuring, whereas the rest of the landslides, they've determined they can do desk reviews. So Pike Street is a much more intensive investigation because it is a much more extensive and potentially problematic landslide, which is why it requires, it requires more, better data than a desk review. So that's when we expect to have our report back. Like I said, I don't want to get ahead of that report, but as a layperson looking at that slide and trying to understand and comprehend what a mitigation would be for that, those two properties, I can't imagine that it would be, from a cost benefit standpoint, worthwhile to save those two homes because the mitigation would be prohibitively expensive. So we just need someone who's an expert to tell us that, because I could tell you that, but I can't tell you why. We need, we need someone who's an expert to tell the city that.
I appreciate that. I am also aware that, because this isn't on the agenda, that there can be, can't be, there's a limit to how substantive this conversation can get. But if possible, could you put on the agenda to provide an update of the work being done by Sanborn Head and Associates for the September meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. This is a, we do flood updates. We, I think we've done a flood update agenda item just about every meeting since, since July. So we will, that will absolutely be part of our ongoing updates to the, to the council. Absolutely.
I just, in, just want to clarify in particular, from what I've heard from the state geological assessment, to clarify that there is a unique and particular concern for the landslide buyouts versus the overall flood buyouts.
Yes.
Upwards of 300. And I know the landslide buyouts may be three or four, so I just want to make sure that we're, we're clear on that. And I appreciate the information you've given.
Yeah, Alexander, absolutely. I think that there are, not to get too far ahead, but I, in my, in my opinion, there are some very obvious candidates for buyout. We just, like I said, we need that expertise to tell us that, to confirm that. But, but in my opinion, those two homes would be, on Pike Street, would be no brainers. That's, that's my opinion, and we just need to know what the experts tell us to validate that.
Thanks for your time, and please be patient with my continued emailing and phone calls.
Oh, you, as I've told you, please don't hesitate, Alexander. You're going through it a lot worse than I am, so don't hesitate.
Thank you.
All right, any other visitors and communications? All right, seeing none, moving on to the consent agenda. We have the approval of the minutes for the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023. And councillor Stockwell would like to make a modification to those.
I wasn't present for that meeting, and it says that I was called out in executive session, so I think it's on page six.
I don't have them in front of me, so I don't know. But we can, we can just make sure that it, that the minutes reflect that you weren't there at all.
But you wanted to.
No, you are correct. You are correct in that. It says councillor came out of executive session at 7:22 on motion by councillor Lozan, seconded by councillor Stockwell, motion carried.
Okay. City warrants, approval of the city warrants from week of August 30th, 2023. Any licenses and permits?
Nope.
All right. Designate the manager as voting delegate at the 2023 VLCT Town Fair. Authorize the purchase of replacement rescue tools and airbags for the fire department, except the resignation of committee board volunteers, which is Pete Funier from the Development Review Board, Jeffrey Tupergiles, Development Review Board, Ellen Sivert, Cemetery's Committee, Michael Helane, Transportation and Public Works Committee, Mark Martin, Transportation and Public Works Committee. And we also have the approve merging CV Council on Aging and RS VP Voter Approved Funding Request. Approval of the addendum to the Wheelock Building Purchase and Sales Agreement. Also approve the Sanborn.
Sanborn Head contract.
Head contract. And ratify the bylaw grant.
Ratify acceptance of the bylaw modernization grant.
That.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, city clerk and treasurer report.
Yep, hang on, let me just catch up. The only thing, a couple of things that I've got is continuing reminder, tax bills went in the mail last week. They are landing in people's mailboxes. If you haven't received yours yet, it should be coming in the next couple of days, but you can always call into the office and we can email a copy to you. It also gives us a good opportunity to make sure that we have the right mailing address on file. So give us a call. First installment is due by October 2. So that's later than usual, but there were extenuating circumstances. You get a little extra time between the May one and this one. But then, on the other side, it'll be a little closer between the October 2 payment than the November 15th payment. So. The other thing is that water and sewer bills are going in the mail on Friday. And they have the same due date, October 2, because the end of September falls on the weekend. So they will be due on October 2 too, also. So we will be seeing people come into the office. We love that. I think that's it.
All right. Moving on to liquor and cannabis control boards?
Nothing.
All right, city managers report.
And thank you, Acting Mayor. I think I'll save mine for the flood recovery because I was looking over my week and it was all flood this week.
All right. Well, moving on to new business, and we are the first reading in public hearing warrant 6:15 PM for accessory dwelling unit zoning revision. And with that, we will have Janet Shatney come up.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening, Janet.
With the memo and the attachment in your packet, this is a planning commission-led endeavor, and I respectfully would like to turn this over to the two that are present, at least to help us tonight. Explain anything, answer any questions you may have. Michael Helyon is the Chair of the Planning Commission, and Joe Rail is also with us tonight, and he is our secretary.
And Raylene.
Yes, hi, this is Michael Helyon, Chair. Sorry for the lack of video tonight. Yeah, on this one, Berry City definitely is in need of bigger changes to the development ordinance than what's included here. But as mentioned in the consent agenda, that's why we've got the bylaw modernization grant coming up. And so bigger changes will come once we have the resources, like the staff resources there to help get all that stuff, you know, to make sure that it's done in a way that's consistent across the ordinance. So these, in this change, are targeted interim changes to remove the common barriers to developing accessory dwelling units. And they respect, they reflect aspects of the ordinance that have blocked proposed units already. So yeah, these changes were originally approved by the planning commission last summer, but they didn't make it to council, and so we approved them again unanimously to start this amendment process over again. And that's all I've got.
All right, questions, councillor, oh, no? Councillor Lozan?
Yeah. Janet, I'm struggling with the parking. I mean, exempt from minimum parking requirements for residential uses of section 3104. And I mean, I get that you wouldn't necessarily have to share a driveway with the primary dwelling. You know, some, some primary dwellings may have two driveways. But within 3104, an applicant can go to the DRB and request relief from the parking requirements, you know, so it's right there. And where I'm struggling is that you could create, under this ordinance, you could create a, well, 900 square feet or 30% of the habitable floor area of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater, interestingly, not whichever is less. And we have also stricken that the accessory dwelling unit, which a lot of people, and I'm sure you've read, and I hope everyone on the committee has read this document, which was put out by Home Share Vermont, AARP, and it really does a great job explaining accessory dwellings and when they're appropriate. And the issue I have is that you could create a three-bedroom apartment shared by three adults and provide no parking. So you could do that on Hilltop Avenue, you could do that on Nelson Street, you could do that on Orange Street. And as the developer, you have to provide no parking. That just really concerns me, because, you know, I can tell you, the first question when we show residential or commercial space, as someone who develops it regularly and has developed a lot of residential and commercial structures in this city, one of the first questions is always, where do we park? And, you know, I've long held that if you want to destroy a neighborhood, create competitive parking. So create a situation where someone creates a three-bedroom accessory dwelling unit that is shared by three adults, all of whom have vehicles, and you don't provide someone, a place for them to park. So people are parking on the streets excessively, this is Vermont, you know, nine months out of the year, well, probably not nine, eight months out of the year, we have a parking ban on the street.
Look, the parking ban is four months.
So that, that forces people to find alternative parking, and it creates almost a competition in neighborhoods. And even in the summertime, it can create, when you have neighborhoods where children are playing, you know, and often dark, in between cars, you can, I think, I just, I can't support this with, with an absolute blank check on parking and zero restrictions. So I don't know if you want to comment to that, I'm putting you on the spot, I apologize, but, you know, I've, I've had this conversation in council chambers before, that as we look at, I'm all for expanding housing, and I'm all about developing housing, but I'm also all about doing it responsibly and in a way that doesn't create chaos within a neighborhood.
I'm going to offer the opportunity for the Chair to speak, or Joe, as planning commissioners, if you want to fill that question first.
Sure, I would be happy to. I mean, I think that what Tom has expressed is that there is a desire in the marketplace for parking, and I think that the best way for that to be solved is for the market to provide it. Historically, we did not require a ton of parking for our residential areas, and that's a large, the fact that we do now is a large part of why we cannot build to replace existing structures. It is conventional across the country to look at the extent to which parking requirements are preventing cities from maximizing their development. And I understand that Tom has a lot of experience with this, and if he can't support it, I completely understand that. But I think there's an equity reason to be in favor of not making people without cars pay for parking spaces they don't use. It's a way of distributing housing resources toward people who can afford automobiles. In this case, this is a tiny slice of our parking question. The reason that it's included here isn't to make a big case about parking, but rather, it's to remove one of the barriers that makes it really hard to develop these units. That is all, thanks, folks.
Councillor, well, you had yours up before. Councillor Wazak.
Sure.
And then councillor Deale.
I definitely understand the concern about parking and the concern for wanting to keep the neighborhoods outside of the downtown from being too congested. But, you know, it's, quite frankly, for me, this is as simple as, we were in a housing crisis before the flood, and then we just lost 100-plus units in town. So anything that we can do to get units online as quick as possible, with as few barriers in place as possible, I'm in support for. So I think that we should move forward with the changes as presented.
Councillor Deareng?
So my question, I guess, would be more whether the DRB would be amenable to adding a number of parking. That having parking provided for the residents is important, that if you don't provide parking for them, essentially, they're going to fight it out. I live in a place now where people key cars, people break windows, people do other things just to kind of get parking spots. So I'd rather not create that chaos while we're trying to fill apartments with people. And I think if we could put some kind of stipulation or ramification in place that doesn't just open up a blank check for, hey, you don't need to provide any kind of parking, I, I think there needs to be a middle ground somewhere here. I think that building housing is important, but also giving carte blanche on saying, you know what, you don't need to provide parking either. That creates a situation that we're going to have to deal with later on.
Councillor Stockwell?
I think with a maximum size of 900 square feet, it's unlikely that there's going to be three bedrooms there. I also think if someone's creating an ADU, they probably have somebody in mind. And it's clearly subordinate to their dwelling. It's not like creating an apartment building. It's creating a place for someone to live, a small place for someone to live. And they may not have a car, they may share a car, they may, I think we can leave it up to the homeowner to figure out what they need in this case, because it's not, it's not an apartment building. It's, it's a place that's probably going to hold, hold at most one or two people. And we desperately, desperately need housing, and especially we need housing that fits smaller families. That's really important. You know, the big Victorian houses are great, they're beautiful, but not everyone can use those houses or afford to maintain them. So I think, given that what it is, what it's going to be, we don't need to have a parking requirement.
Councillor Wazak?
I would make the motion to approve the revisions to the ADU language section and move them to a second reading and public hearing to the next scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Discussion? Councillor Lozan?
I mean, councillor Stockwell, you can sit there and say, well, I don't think anybody would, would do a three-bedroom. That's not what it says. So if you're so confident, why don't we limit this to two bedrooms? I mean, we can be a little bit more restrictive, but, you know, a parking space is 162 square feet. That's all. I mean, it's really not a big deal. And like I said, as someone who has been doing this for 30 years, I can tell you, the worst thing you can do to a neighborhood is overpopulate it with dwelling units and not provide enough parking. It, it, it creates chaos within the neighborhood, and as to the comment that, you know, we shouldn't ask people who don't have a vehicle to pay for a parking space, they don't have to. Because if you look at section 30, this totally exempts an accessory dwelling unit from 3104. Now, under 3104, you can go to the DRB and you can ask that they waive the parking requirements. So you could say, well, you know, none of these So you could say, well, you know, none of these tenants are going to own a vehicle, so I would like them waived. And the DRB has the ability to waive it under 3104. This simply writes a blank check. You know, I am all for developing housing, you know, I have been beating that drum for decades, so I'm all about it, but I'm also all about doing it responsibly. And I've done it. And as we sit here having this discussion, I'm not aware of anyone else involved in this discussion who has. So, you know, I come to you with a voice of experience in this. So it's just, it's not something I can support. I can certainly support accessory dwellings, but not with a total exemption from 3104. So I would not exempt it. I would simply, and I wouldn't even say need it, I would say it is subject to the minimum parking requirements for residential uses of Section 3104, because under 3104, if the person developing the accessory unit says, well, this is for my mother-in-law, she only has one vehicle, that's all they have to provide, is the one parking space. You know, 3104 is not onerous, it's not, it's not overbearing. How many of you have heard any developers or any residents complain about, you know, housing ordinance Section 3104? I never have. So I think to exempt it, I think would be a big mistake.
Any additional comments, questions? Counselor?
I'm going to go to Counselor Deering's question. Is there a middle ground within this?
3104.
Well, between...
Because if you can present, if you can make the case...
Between 3104 and being exempt.
Oh, explain it. Well, I mean, it's lengthy. 3104 defines how much parking you have to provide. For example, if you have a three-bedroom unit, you have to provide one parking space plus .2 parking spaces. I always love this, because I don't even know what .2 parking spaces looks like, but that is what 3104 says. If you have a three-bedroom unit, you have to provide one parking space and then an additional .2 parking spaces for every additional bedroom. So if you had a three-bedroom unit, technically, the developer would have to provide 1.4 parking spaces. It's not onerous. And then, interestingly, if 3104 doesn't work for the developer of an accessory unit, they can seek an exemption, and the DRB can waive all of the parking requirements under 3104, but at least the applicant has to come at the DRB with a good reason, not a blank
Counselor Shembro, and then Janet Shatney. I don't know why I was struggling there.
What did you do?
Well, I was going to try to do her title, but...
Yes, stage fright or something?
Yeah, I know.
We won't have you all night.
Her title's longer than the ordinance.
Okay, before I forget what I was going to say, you're talking about a three-bedroom unit requiring a certain number of parking places. I dare say that when you have a dwelling not to exceed 900 square feet, it's hard to get a three-bedroom unit unless what you're doing, and I've met people who've done this before, made the bedroom literally the size of a single bunk bed. And, and I'm betting that's not how it's looking.
Well, interestingly, Counselor, not outside of Berry, Vermont. If you go to more urban areas, a lot of people live in studio apartments that are about 420 square feet. A bedroom, a 12-by-12 bedroom, average 12-by-12 bedroom is 144 square feet. So if you had, you know, a two-bedroom apartment could easily fit, it would be tight, but that's generally the way development is working, because we all recognize that we have X number of households and individuals who need a roof over their heads. So the smart thing to do to keep costs down is to develop two-bedroom units that don't exceed 720 square feet. And so I don't, I don't dispute your claim that someone who is developing, an owner-occupant who is developing an accessory unit, I don't dispute your claim that it would be rather unlikely that they, that they build a three-bedroom unit. They certainly could in 900 square feet. If you do the math, it would fit. I doubt they would, but my concern is that this ordinance is just exempting, like, zero parking. You could make a three-bedroom unit and provide no parking. You could make a one-bedroom unit and provide no parking. If we did not exempt them from 3104, they could still do that, but they would have to make the case. They wouldn't have a blank check. So they would have to go to the DRB, and they would like, they would have to say, the developer or the owner-occupant would have to say, I'd really like you to waive the requirements of 3104, and this is why. And then our DRB could ask questions like, is it going to be a safety issue in the neighborhood? Where are people going to park in the winter? What if you get a tenant who has a car? What are you going to do then? You know, and like I said, a parking space is 170 square feet. It's not hard. Does it cost something to develop a parking space? Yeah, it costs a few thousand dollars, but I think, you know, the peace and safety in neighborhoods, and again, I am wholly in favor of this ordinance, but I just think it would be a problem. It would be, it would be a problem in cases, and it only takes a few to turn a neighborhood on its end. So that's why I can't support this.
All right. Janet, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify for everybody to understand what an accessory dwelling unit is. It's what is essentially an apartment, but the owner has to either live in the house or the ADU has to be in the house or in a structure on the property. So the owner has to live on the property. And a single-family owner-occupied detached single-family dwelling unit is only required to have two parking spaces. So this would waive any parking for the additional third or fourth to make it easier for any tenants. Remember, it's, it has to be part of, or in addition to, a single-family home. And the other thing is, to speak to Counselor Lozon's, talking about going in front of the DRB, if, if someone comes to our office and requests permitting for ADUs, and we've seen three of them probably in the last six months, they do not need to go in front of the Development Review Board. They can be done totally out of our office. The permitting is done out of our office, as long as they meet all the requirements. So if they can't meet the parking requirement, speaking to what Counselor Lozon said, then they would have to go in front of the DRB to request that waiver. So that would be an additional step to put in an ADU. I just wanted to clarify that. If anybody was struggling with, this is not anything other than a single-family home with an accessory dwelling unit. You can't put one in a duplex, you can't put one in a triplex. Thank you.
And Michael?
Yes, absolutely. Janet said very much what I wanted to say. The only thing that I wanted to add is that while going to the DRB does add an extra step and an extra fee, we also have observed that the DRB is not always timely in giving its judgment. And so it's not a trivial thing to ask someone who might be on, who we want to be on a short timeline to be placing these units in, to say, yes, go do this other thing that could take, you know, some number of months to complete. But otherwise, I think, I think Tom is completely right that there's a way to do it. The question for us is, you know, is speed a concern?
And Counselor Lozon?
So, so here's the real issue. I mean, there's a million issues exempting it from 3104, but let me throw this one at you. So I live in my home, I create an accessory dwelling unit, I provide no parking for them. That's legal, because this Berry City Council exempted the owner from 3104. A year later, I sell my home, and an investor buys that home, and they're not going to live there. Now, so what are we going to do then, Janet? Are we going to tell the person who lives in the accessory dwelling unit, that is not a compliant unit, you need to go?
Technically, yes.
Technically, yes. Do you see the problems, folks? I think this stuff through, because this is what I do every day. I pound nails.
All right. Counselor Wazak, and then Counselor Stockwell.
Yeah, this is about parking requirements, and there's no middle ground or compromise for me, because we either subject ADU's to parking requirements, or we do not. As we just heard, subjecting it to 304 adds an extra step and adds extra money to development. And, and, that's it. I have, I have other jokes, but...
So do smoke detectors.
Yes.
But they're worth it.
Yeah, and parking requirements are not a necessity. You don't need to have a car or to have a parking spot to live somewhere. I have lived in smaller communities outside of Boston, not smaller than Berry, but smaller than Boston, where we have three, four bedrooms, no parking. You figure it out. You figure out what you have to do. I am more concerned with getting people into housing as fast as possible, more so than I am concerned for making rope.
Okay. So Counselor Stockwell?
You know, if the house gets sold and someone doesn't want to live, it's going to, you know, if the house gets sold, if an apartment building gets sold, things change. There's nothing we can do about turnover. There's no plan you can make for any building. Like, someone could buy an apartment building and say, oh, I'm going to, you know, I'm going to tear down the, this floor and make it one big space. You guys are going to have to move. There's nothing we can do about that. It just changes when things change.
There is, Counselor. Just don't subject them to 3104, because under 3104, just as Janet said, you can seek a waiver. I think that going before our DRB is some enormous process, you know, it's not. And anyone is going to be, who is going to be planning to build an accessory dwelling unit, they're going to have to get, get an occupancy permit, they're going to have to get a building permit, they're going to have to get an electrical permit, they're going to have to get a plumbing permit. Going to the DRB and saying, hey, I'd like you to waive the requirements under 3104 is good practice, and it, and it's not onerous. You know, when you look at what it actually takes to build a building, there is a little bit of planning involved, and going to the DRB for a one-hour meeting isn't going to add an inordinate amount of cost to any building project.
All right. So I do got one question for, before I go to Joe. One question for Janet. In the scenario that Counselor Lozon put out, if, if it's automatically, if the person does leave the house and they're no longer, it's no longer owner-occupied, the person in the accessory, accessory dwelling unit would have to move out? However, if they did have the waiver, that would not be the case, correct?
Not necessarily. ADUs, we have to provide language and the ability to have accessory dwelling units by law. How we enforce that is a whole different animal. You put an ADU in your house and you move. The person who buys it doesn't want to live there. We have to tell them that has to be an owner-occupied unit. So if it doesn't, if they don't want to live there, then we have to think about, does that qualify to be a duplex? And under S-100, duplexes are going to be required, which we already have, thank goodness, in every residential zoning district.
Okay.
So it boils down to, this is what I've always asked everybody who comes in front of us to permit an ADU, is how do you want to do this? Do you want to do this as an accessory dwelling unit? The old term was the grandmother-in-law apartment. Because down the road, if you leave, then it will need to become a duplex. That new owner may have to do a change of use.
Okay. Commissioner Rayo?
Yeah, I don't have too much to add. I think Michael Helling has already pretty much said everything I would. I just want to sort of clarify, maybe clarify one thing. We're not talking about no parking spaces, we're talking about no additional parking spaces. I know that may sound like splitting hairs, but it is kind of an important difference. Other than that, I would also just second what, what Counselor Wazak said. We're in, we're already in a housing crisis, it's getting worse. We need to remove hurdles that prevent additional housing, because we need it. That's all.
All right. Any other discussion?
Could I offer an amendment? I don't know if it would be considered...
Wait a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Weg?
Yes, hi, thank you. I just also wanted to speak in favor of the ordinance and underscore what Janet just said, which is regardless of the parking situation, the process that Janet just outlined is something that every homeowner and accessory dwelling unit would have to go through if it changed hands and was not owner-occupied. So that's kind of regardless of the parking situation, that applies. And again, this is no new parking, there's still existing parking in that wherever these would be developed, that the original kind of owner-occupied building would have to be subject to.
All right. Counselor Lozon? I'm assuming, Joe, you're all set, correct?
Like I said, if we could simply, if we could simply strike the changes to 3202A, Section 7, I mean, it would require some, in other words, leave it alone and make it subject to 3104. Again, not an issue. If the house was sold, if they provided the required parking and the house was sold, then the accessory dwelling unit would still be compliant as a duplex. You know, I think it's a reasonable compromise, and like I said, I think it's important to provide, a three-bedroom unit would have to provide, if they just wanted to go straight by 3104, they'd have to provide 1.4 parking spaces. Correct, Janet?
A one, a three-bedroom?
A three-bedroom?
Would be 1.2, yes.
1.4 parking spaces. You know, 3104 isn't onerous. And so if someone wanted to create a three-bedroom accessory, 1.4 parking spaces, I don't know what somebody's going to do with .4 of a parking space, but, you know, that's all they have to do. And at least it provides some layer of oversight, so that we're looking at folks who are building an accessory dwelling unit, and I hope folks do, and saying, well, where are your tenants going to park? And if they say, well, gee, you know, I don't know, I don't have, I have a two, two-car driveway, my wife has a car, I have a car, so I guess they're going to park on the street. What are they going to do in the winter? Not my problem, quite frankly. Not my problem. Well, it's going to be everyone's problem when that person has to park on the street in the winter, and then they're driving all over the city looking for a parking space. It's how you ruin neighborhoods.
Counselor Wazak, is that a friendly amendment? Is there a motion for an unfriendly amendment?
Yeah, I'm going to suggest that the, that we strike the changes to what would be, well, it was Section 7 under 3202-A. Correct, Janet?
Yes.
So we leave Section 7, so Section 7 would just remain intact and would actually become, it would still be Section 5, it would just be unchanged. Does everyone understand that? We're leaving, the reference to 3104 would remain unchanged in the current ordinance.
Right.
So that is my amendment.
That's the motion for amendment. Is there a second?
But isn't there a prior motion already on the table?
There is. This is an amendment.
We're moving an amendment, so, yeah.
Is there a second?
I will, I'll second that.
All right. Discussion?
Before we vote, if we vote yea, then we're voting to keep this as is. That one, that one piece.
This particular, correct. We're making it so that it's, what it will say is...
Meet the...
Meet the minimum parking requirements for residential...
And if we vote no, then do we go back to the previous amendment?
The original motion. All right?
Regardless, we go back to the original motion.
Correct, correct. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion, sorry, those, no?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, motion?
Are you voting?
I am voting no. Oh, yea, sorry.
So it doesn't pass?
It doesn't pass.
So now you've got the main motion on the table.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Nay. Motion fails?
Yep.
Well, so, what will end up happening is that we will have to warn this again, and when the mayor returns, he can be that vote to make it go through.
I believe what you've done is you've sent it back to the Planning Commission.
Correct.
So we literally have to start our process over with another ultimate public hearing to be able to forward it back to you folks.
Correct.
Okay, just so you are clear, we're, we're back to starting over.
Sorry, Planning Commission.
Sorry.
All right. Next item, flood recovery updates.
Thank you. Counselor Wasak, I have a PowerPoint. And Counselor should have it on your desk. So Counselors, here's some updates from the, since we last met, on flood recovery efforts. I'll wait for the presentation to catch up.
Oh, sorry, I didn't.
Nope, sorry.
I started to take notes. No, 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 come on. Thank you.
Perfect, next slide. Oh, there, yeah. So have updates on the public assistance damage assessment. So this is all the damages that the city's responsible for correcting. We issued RFPs for the rehabilitation of City Hall, Public Safety Building and the Wheelock Building. Those RFPs are due Thursday, September 7th. And we will have a, there's a mandatory site visit tomorrow that several contractors are, are scheduled to attend. So we should have competitive bids. We're hoping for competitive bids to bring to councils for approval on September 12th. We had a, this week, we had a scoping meeting with FEMA on the public assistance damages. So that began our 60-day clock for identification of all our projects. So far, we have identified 56 projects with FEMA that we, that we went through line by line. And just in very broad categories, there's four emergency protective measures, eight culverts, eight road repairs, six landslides, and many, many others, including parks, playgrounds. We are, we capture everything that happened. And so those are all itemized.
And so the, for emergency protective measures are?
Yeah, those were, those are mostly been completed, but for example, that includes the landslide on Portland where the home was removed. It includes landslide on Oswald Street where debris was removed when it was pushing up against another house. So those are the types of, it includes the debris removal as well. So those are primarily completed at this point.
Got a question for you about Cornerstone Baseball Field?
Yes.
That's owned by the city, correct?
Correct.
And are we able to take advantage of FEMA funding to help fix that?
Yes. That is on our, that is one of the identified projects.
Okay. I just wanted to double check for Berry City Community Baseball.
Yeah, absolutely. So that's, I know the fencing's a big issue there, but I know the field also needs some work, the infield as well, but that, that will, that is on our list.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure. So we will continue to work with FEMA on those projects. What will happen now is, for example, some of those, some of these projects are already 100% complete. So like, as the, as an example, the Portland Street demolition, we will start submitting our paperwork for that project. And that will start helping us with cash flow. As we finish projects, we can start submitting them. They'll get, go through the FEMA approval process. And that will help us start to get reimbursements. In addition, we, thank you to the council for approving the paving contract for flood repair last week. We are, there's one more day of paving left at Cliff Street, and Pleasant Street will be following shortly after that, weather permitting. They may not be able to finish Cliff Street tomorrow, but as, as long as the weather cooperates, we'll continue moving to fix streets damage with that paving contract. Next slide. So this is our current status on streets in the city. Berlin Street remains closed between North Main and Smith Street. That is pending pavement repairs at the bridge. So we received positive news that the bridge itself is structurally safe.
Awesome.
So, yeah, so that's great news. And we are just, we just need to pave the run-up to it. And we should be able to reopen it to traffic after that is completed. So that was positive news that the bridge is, is safe and we can, once we finish the repairs, it can be back, back in business. Pike Street, we talked about a little bit earlier. That remains closed, and that remains closed for the foreseeable future due to the, the landslide above it. West Patterson Street, between Ayers Street and Orange Street, is closed to vehicular traffic, but it is open to limited and necessary pedestrian traffic. So today, our DPW crews were there making the, the space as safe as they could and barricading the, the areas of potential hazards. I just wanna emphasize that it's limited and necessary pedestrian traffic. It shouldn't be used for just recreation. And so really, the reason this is open is for the, the students who use this as a, as a path to the school, to Spalding High School. And this is on our list with Sanborn Head to get an analysis for potential mitigation, but we also, this is one we also expect to be pricey. But anyway, I, we wanted to make sure we opened it for pedestrian traffic before school, which happened. Again, we'll urge people to use caution and to only use it when, when absolutely necessary. Merchant Street is closed between Warren Street and Maple Avenue. This is a 24-hour day closure until September 15th. This is not flood-related. This is due to the, the state's infrastructure project that's been going on in that area. So that is only open to local traffic through the 15th. And then Cliff Street and Pleasant Street are not fully closed, but they do have intermittent closures. Well, Pleasant Street has not been closed at all. Cliff Street is closed intermittently for paving. Pleasant Street will be in that same situation probably early next week when paving crews move in that direction. And then the stretch of Maple Avenue near Hope Cemetery also is subject to one-way traffic. That's also not due to flooding, but to the state's infrastructure project. Next slide. So debris collection has ended. We have, we are no longer collecting private debris for, for residential homeowners. The commercial debris collection had ended a while back, but residential debris is now done. We had identified 16 final sites for debris collection, and they were all picked up by Saturday as part of the, the cleanup crew got the last pile on a street that the state's contractor could not travel through. So all those sites have been picked up, they're gone. And so it is, we are, the city's ending its part of the debris collection operation. I would guide individuals who still need assistance with it to the Rainbow Bridge Community Center, which has indicated to us that they have ways to assist people who still need debris removal. So contact Rainbow Bridge for, for help. But the city's process is done, the state contractor is finished. They collected 3,875 tons from, from Berry City. That was the state's contractor. So quite a hefty, quite a hefty amount of, of debris moved out of the city. On the right there, you see the bulky waste disposal event that the city has scheduled for September 16th from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. This will be located at the Auditorium Hill, on Auditorium Hill at the BOR parking lot. This is for residential waste only, and it's for residents only. And proof will be required to, to travel through the, the parking lot to, to leave debris. And there's some of the items there listed that residents can bring. I think the big key is no yard waste, no household hazardous waste.
Do you know, I took a phone call today from somebody who wondered about metal. And do we know whether Bulldogs is gonna have a metal dumpster there?
There will be a metal dumpster, yes, correct. Perfect. Next slide. So landslides, we talked a little bit about this earlier on during Visitors and Communications, but thank you to the council for the geotechnical firm that's assisting us with the landslide situation. As I alluded to when we spoke earlier, Pike Street is gonna get the bulk of the attention from this firm because that is the, the slide we are most concerned about. And that's a four-week time period between, between what this, the beginning of the analysis and the report. And we are looking to get information that will help us inform a decision about a buyout, which, as I mentioned, in my opinion, from layman's perspective, looking at that landslide, would, would probably be backed up by what they find. Certainly, anyone who's been up there is concerned about it. And then these are the additional sites that the, the Sanborn Head will be looking at and giving us some desk reviews. They're gonna look at probable cause, any potential movement that could happen in the near term, and some preliminary repair options. Those are sites that, while still, we're concerned about, certainly not to the extent of Pike Street, which is right over two homes directly. So that's our contract. We, those, the, the second batch, the, the less severe batch, we expect reports in about two weeks for those.
So potentially for some of the landslides, once that landslide is settled, could, could that area be rebuilt?
It's possible, and, and that's why.
Safely?
Yeah. So, so for example, that's, that's a question we have on Portland Street, which, now that the landslide actually gave, is it stable? Could something go up there? Because it, it didn't slide for 40 years, right? So at least. So that's why we need the analysis. And, and they're not immediately on our list because the other ones are, are still potentially active. But we, we don't want to make a decision about a buyout if we know that there can be either a safe mitigation measure, or on a place like Portland Street where the land already gave, is it now stabilized because it gave?
And it would be, would it be a state buyout or a FEMA buyout? Or it could be either?
It could be either. I think right now, I would suspect Pike Street is likely on the FEMA buyout list because of the prohibitiveness of stabilizing it. But it could, it could be either. Yeah. So Portland could, for example, could be a state buyout if it's deemed something that could be redeveloped. So that's that on landslides. The next, next slide, please. So the residential damage, this is, just reminding counsel of some of the assessments we previously provided, based on a lot of, there's been a lot of data coming through based on our collection of data from various sources, including crisis cleanup and information provided us, to us from the relief organizations that were on the ground mucking people out. We came to an estimate of about 363 structures with damage, and those contain about 517 units within those structures. Janet's been working on the substantially damaged inventory, and our numbers remain consistent there. We're looking at about 17 substantially damaged, and then 14 that are likely to be added to that list. And as of this afternoon, and just for, for what that means, is that those substantially damaged homes will now have to be rebuilt to the floodplain standards. Janet, is that right? Did I say that correctly? Thank you. So, yep.
So Janet, just to clarify, people cannot redo the same thing? They can't put their boilers back in their basements if they're rebuilding?
Substantially. Or substantially damaged. Yeah, yeah.
And we're recommending everybody raise things up because they got flooded.
Yeah.
But only people who are substantially damaged cannot do that? Is that correct?
Will be, have to do that.
Have to do that.
They have to do that, correct. Yep.
What I meant to say. Thanks.
And then as of this afternoon, from our code enforcement, 112 homes have been green-tagged, which means they, they got a visit, a hello. 77 homes remain yellow-tagged, and these are really heat and electrical. And 10 remain red-tagged, and those are all due to landslides or structural issues. We're not in, in any issues where there's landlord issues at this point. These are all landslides or structural at this, at this juncture. Some of our priorities, we've really pivoted, I think, with the end of the debris. We've come a long way. We are now really pivoting most of our attention to the, to the next stage of the recovery. And so a lot of our priorities are coming into this area now of how we handle the residential damages. So we are finalizing assessments and notifications to the homeowners about substantial damage, determinations that will, that will have a great impact. We're narrowing the number of impacted individuals to get a universe of who's impacted. This is, this is difficult because we don't have, we, we don't have records of tenants. We have a landlord registry. And so we're trying to get the information of the, the actual impact of people, and, and we just don't have their contact information. So we're relying a lot on the canvassing we're getting, but that's, that's been a challenge. The data overall has been a challenge. And really trying to project and prioritize the homes that can be rehabilitated quickly. We know there's efforts that are being stood up to do that. And we want to use the data we have already to direct those groups to the homes that can be quickly retrofitted to, to be habitable for the winter. So those are just kind of outlining for council that, that we know this is where our priorities need to shift. Those are just three of the top-level priorities that, that we are gonna start dedicating our resources to, to make sure we make that, that pivot to, to preparation for, for the heating season. Counselor Lozon?
Thank you. Just a quick question. So 363 structures, 517 units. Focus on the 363. And then I look at 112 homes, green-tagged, 77 yellow, 10 red-tagged. That adds up to 200. Are there 163 that aren't, and I'm not making jests. Are there 163 that aren't tag-worthy on some level, or?
It's, that's, that's likely the situation, yeah.
Okay, so there's likely 163 who's suffered.
Exactly.
Some damage, but not even to the point where they need to be inspected further or yellow-tagged.
Correct, yeah. So a lot of, we, we found out, one of the weekend events with volunteers was canvassing, and we ran into people who had, who had little water in the basement, lost some debris, some, some material in the basement. We're logging those because it helps us with FEMA.
Gotcha.
But they, they didn't need a visit from, from, they, they wouldn't have reported it unless someone knocked on their door.
So, so as counselors, we should likely, and this actually makes me feel a little better, because it's, you know, the three, looking at the 363 number, and like I mentioned to you at a previous meeting, you know, 363, give or take 40, end up significantly damaged. That leaves 323. And, you know, my comment to you at the, at a previous meeting was, those are the ones that worry me because I don't know, well, how damaged are they? You know, they don't have a furnace, they don't have power, they don't have both, they don't have, they have everything but hot water, including heat. So what I'm reading into this is that when the council looks at how many people could be potentially displaced or are displaced, we should really be focusing on the 77 and the 10, those 87 structures, and not a higher number.
That, I think that's the, that's the takeaway. The 77 is, gives us a good universe of those that need electrical heating, because those are primarily why they're yellow-tagged. And then, you're right, the ballpark, 30, 40, whatever ends up being substantially damaged, because this doesn't include.
But that could be 150 dwelling units.
It could be, yes.
You know, if it's a duplex, if there are duplexes and triplexes, then it could be a much higher number than 77. Do we have any data at all on the 77?
Yes, code enforcement has that data, yeah.
Would it be possible for the council to, at our next meeting, to just get an update from them?
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, and what I'm really looking for is, you know, of the 77, okay, folks, 50 have repairs underway. They're, they're doing okay. And, you know, unfortunately, 27 of them are paralyzed, are not, are not responsible, not responding, and don't appear to engage in, to be engaged in any sort of repairs. Then those are the ones that we need to focus on because people are gonna be cold.
Yes.
In 30 days.
Right. Yeah, Counsel, you're absolutely right.
So if we could just get that, and I'm not looking for addresses, I'm not looking for any identifying information. I'm just trying to figure out in advance, do we, like you have, you know, do we have a problem or not?
Yes.
And, and how, how big is the problem? And how, how, how big does our reaction have to be to it?
Exactly. No, you're, you're absolutely right. And, and I would, the only thing I would add is that, which I think is why the approximately 40 is correct on substantially damaged, that doesn't include the landslides. So.
Oh, it does not?
It does not. So that's, that could be, that could be the two Pike Street, that could be West Patterson, that, that could be, that's why approximately 40 on substantially damaged plus landslide is a, is a fair ballpark.
Yeah.
So the other, oh, sorry.
And so we're looking at FEMA trailers. And have, are landlords in good compliance?
I'm sorry, just a second.
Are landlords in good compliance?
Yeah, so what I have from, from code enforcement is that they're not, they are in contact with, with people. They are not flagging any landlord issues at this point.
Can I ask you a question about the?
So I have a particular constituent I'm dealing with on Granite Street that's having some issues with their landlord, and trying to figure out when exactly, they were told originally that they would never be able to go back into the apartment. They do have a lease until June of next year. But now apparently, they're going to rehab the apartment at some point. So I'm just kind of curious where the city plays into, to helping, you know, the tenants get back into where they were.
Right.
And the landlords also, you know, kind of work with the tenants.
Right. So that, it's, it'd be difficult to know for sure. I know Granite Street, it, it could be a substantially damaged on Granite Street, depending on where it is. So I think depending on the conditions of the building, it's, it's possible that there's. So I think depending on the conditions of the building, it's possible that there's enough damage that they may not be able to have them back.
My understanding is that the top floor is being rented right now,
Okay.
and that the bottom floor is not where these individuals were staying.
So why don't we follow up, and we'll see what we can do there.
Awesome, thank you.
But yeah, the general assessment, this update came today from code enforcement. They are working good communication, and there's plans in place for moving forward on these sites. The FEMA trailer, so the city has provided FEMA with data and maps about potential parcels for the placement of trailers. And so early on, we had heard from FEMA that the trailers were three-season, which was very concerning, but we learned later from FEMA that they don't. So I don't know if there was a miscommunication somewhere. It was a pleasant miscommunication because they do have trailers that they can put up here. And we have, Janet ran some data for them. Their standards were three acres, not in the floodplain, connected to water and sewer at the right-of-way. As you can, you know, you can picture, there's not a lot of parcels that meet that, those standards in the city. They are also talking to other communities in Washington County, so this is not just a Berry City exercise. But they are, Janet identified 18 properties. Only two of those are city properties, and that's the auditorium, and there's a section of the bike path, not the bike patch, the bike path, near the dog park, which is also not readily accessible. So you can, this is, this is really coming back to the conversations we were having earlier this summer about end of the general assistance program. There just isn't a lot of land in Berry for these kinds of solutions.
Three acres seems like a lot, but they're not going to budge from that because they're
They've actually budged low. They were at five, and they went to three.
Oh.
Yeah, and these are 14 by 78 trailers, so they're
Good size.
They're good size, yeah, yeah. So with parking. So yeah, this is with FEMA now. We've obviously, you know, this is, we've given them the information they asked for, they know we're available, but as, you know, as you can all know, you know the city well. There's just not a lot of places that are readily prepared to receive those types of trailers. So we're going to really have to, I think, rely on some of our neighboring municipalities to share this need of housing people if they have more space available that can receive these trailers more readily. And then finally, on the residential damage, just an update that the state has made resources available to the city for staffing to assist with homeless individuals and those that are at risk of becoming homeless and will need assistance with rehousing. So very excited, very grateful to Agency of Human Services for doing this. I've been in touch with a person in Burlington who has a similar job that the state is proposing to us, so we have a job description. The next step is really just working on a budget and some deliverables for this grant, but we're very excited and thankful to the state to make this person available, this position available. We'll have to hire it, but it'll be something very, very helpful for us in our recovery.
So what is this individual going to help people with? What kind of resources?
So there'll be a coordinator between providers here in the city, and we want them to help with, you know, development projects, to help with any sort of places that can be, some of what we were talking earlier with Council Loz on, helping with the coordination between homes that can be ready and builders that can, that can help those houses be ready. We know there's some relief organizations that are going to stand up to help with some finishing of homes. So this person's going to be sort of a quarterback and can help
Okay.
needs and supplies together, and also help with our existing population as well that we were trying to help before the flood as well. So they're going to be sort of a jack-of-all-trades, and it'll just be helpful to have that extra capacity.
Okay. Thank you.
And next slide, just an update on volunteer activities. Our volunteer coordinator is here in the audience, Adam. So just want to highlight and appreciate everyone on Saturday for the statewide cleanup day, which was just a tremendous success. We had 90, over 90 volunteers showed up, and including our governor, who was here with a team that did some terrific work at Denty Park, and the TV playground left it in great shape for us. So it was terrific to see that, what they did there. They really finished the project after they had cleaned it up earlier this year. We had crews collecting tires and bringing them to the auditorium to stage them, just so we could help people, one less thing for many homeowners to do. So we collected a lot of tires from the north end, and they are now staged at the auditorium, ready for the event, the collection event, and they also collected the last debris piles as well. And we also had a crew from DPW and Facilities working together, hitting some high-neat areas of the city, and they trucked out 16 loads of mud. So really a productive day, and thanks to Adam who helped coordinate it and give people deployments. We got a lot done on Saturday.
May I ask Adam a question? I was at a housing meeting last night, and they were discussing about where can a homeowner go for good centralized information? Would you say that Rainbow Bridge Community Center, is that a good place for them to go to say, okay, here's where you can find out about how to get a rebate for a heat pump? Here's where you can go to find a reliable contractor? Is that, is that happening anywhere for people? So there's like a one, or you can get this grant, you can also apply for this grant?
I'm not sure the Rainbow Bridge community has the answers to that information. Michael?
You might want to go up there to speak.
To the mic, yeah. I would say, counsel, one of the, one of the things we're working on, and it was later in my update, but we are very close to the launch of the resource hub here at the old police department that we're rehabbing. So that will be certainly a one-stop place where we're going to have, looking to have service organizations set up right here in City Hall where they can come and talk to a gamut of providers. So that's very close to lunch, we're just waiting on the space to be done. But that will certainly, that's the intent of that space, which is to give people one place to go.
A centralized place.
Yeah, and the beauty of it is that they can go into that space to talk to service providers. If they need to come to City Hall for any other business related to their flood recovery, they're already in the building as well.
I just wanted to add, you know, Capstone Community Action has been an amazing partner in our community, and they also help with a lot of those things, whether it be weatherization or food or childcare, you know, whatever you're trying to, you know, bridge that gap with. So I would definitely send them down to Capstone as well.
Um, and then
You could have them email me if you want. You could have them email me if you want.
Okay. Thanks.
And finally, so Adam's a school teacher, as part of his day job, so the volunteer hub is no longer active on weekdays, but please do stay tuned for, we're still going to do volunteer events on the weekends. So Adam's the person who emails you from volunteer@berrycity.org, and his events and opportunities to help come up, he will be reaching out, but the weekday events are not going to continue. And next slide. So community forum, so we discussed this at the last council meeting. We are working with Vermont Council on Rural Development to host a community forum, and it has been scheduled for Wednesday, September 13th, from 5:30 PM to 9:00 PM at the Berry Opera House. So we tried, I think Counsel Loz on made a great point about trying to do this before the 12th. We just, scheduling-wise, it wouldn't work with VCRD due to some commitments they had on their staff level. So I think we reluctantly, I think we know we need to do this event, so knowing that we would lose that opportunity on the 12th, we still thought it was important to book it. So we will be, we will be working, VCRD does a great job of helping us promote the event, they're going to work on flyers for us. This is just letting people know the when, where, and we will start getting the word out more broadly through all of our partners. But we're looking forward to this forum. We had a planning discussion with them today. Just the general format will be really an open discussion at the beginning of the session, and then breakout groups as well, where people can talk in smaller groups, where we can hopefully draw people out a little bit better who may not want to talk in the bigger setting. And just some of the six topics that came out were housing, you know, talking about recovery agencies and sort of how people do navigate the agencies they'll have to work with to recover, like FEMA and the state. Volunteer and assistance efforts, individual and youth wellness, or really talking about the trauma that people felt during the flood and continue to feel, and the interruption to schooling and housing for, interruption to housing for kids at school, and just the impacts for natural environment and climate, and then just the long-term vision, the resilience and future of the city as well. So these are kind of the six high-level topics that came out. Please be on the lookout for more information about this, but we will be working with VCRD to get the word out very broadly about the forum.
I was talking with Amanda last week about this because it conflicts with my statutorily required Board of Civil Authority meeting. And what she had told me was that the intention was to start this at 7:00 instead of 5:30, so we can do our meeting from 6:00 to 7:00.
Okay.
Is that not what was part of the discussion?
It came up today, but there was, there was a feeling that the BCA meeting might be completed in time for the members of the BCA to join the breakouts session. So we can certainly, we can certainly modify that if we need to.
And I can look at, and I'm looking around the table to Board of Civil Authority members, we could look at, to moving our meeting to 5:00, which would, I mean, we'd be done by 6:00. It's, but I have to hold it by statute. It's the last possible date, and because of other conflicts that week, it doesn't, yeah.
We can certainly, I think if, you know, we're here to do sort of what the council would like us to do, if there's a, if we need to change the time, if it works starting at 6:00 on our end, on the forums end, that's, I'm totally comfortable to make it so that it's a productive event for everyone.
I just think, you know, it's, we're going to need time for this. Obviously, we have to hold the BCA, so I would advocate for holding the BCA thing from 5:00, the BCA meeting from 5:00 to 5:30.
We're going to need 45 minutes at least, so, but I, but I
Push that to 6:00, maybe?
Hmm? Yeah.
Push that to 6:00.
Yeah, so if we do, if we do 5:00 to 6:00, or 5:50
I just want to lose minimal time out of it.
Particularly since the, this community forum is upstairs.
Yeah.
So if we're meeting down here at 5:00 and we finish at 5:00 of 6:00, everybody will have time to get upstairs. So I'll look to move to the BCA meeting to 5:00, so.
That's great, thanks, thanks, Carol. And next slide. And we alluded to this last week, we're just really very concerned about the impacts on the city budget, of course. We are working with Dawn to create an analysis of the expected budget impacts to bring to the council in September. Obviously, it goes without saying, we are very concerned with the loss of revenue and some long-term cash flow issues if FEMA funding is not received in a reasonable time period. We don't want to be alarmist, that's why we want to make sure we're looking at the data, but we will be coming to council in September with what some of the impacts are anticipated to be. We expect just difficult conversations about mid-year adjustments and just a really tough FY25 conversation as well. And we've already started to take some steps, I just highlighted one there in the bullet. We terminated the C Click Fix contract. It's $500, $5,500 in savings. Wasn't used, it just wasn't getting traffic. It wasn't, for me, an easy termination because there was, there was just, there was just no value added to the city or the residents. I think it was implemented with good intentions, it just didn't, it just didn't have the staffing capacity to support it, and as a result, residents haven't used it, so that was sort of an easy $5,500 to me. Just an example, those are the kinds of things we're starting to do. There will be much harder ones than this, so to me, this was an easy one, there will be much harder ones. And $5,500 is, I know, a drop in the bucket, but it's also $5,500 that we don't have to find somewhere else. So, so anyway, just, I just want counsel to know, we are working on this, we are, we're going to come to you in September with, once we have a better picture, but it's, just don't want to sugarcoat it, it's going to be a challenging situation.
So this is sort of a, Janet, Carol, your question. With the reassessment that's going to happen and be completed by April?
Of '25.
Of '25, never mind. I don't have a question. I'm good.
Quick question, Nicholas Swed.
Yeah.
What are the concern, when you talk about loss of revenue, specifically property tax revenue? Because I'm not really aware of, you know, any other revenue that
Property tax revenue, and these won't be killers, but the parking revenue, the pool revenue, they're not, those things wouldn't normally break us, but they're just going to be
But we're going to miss budget.
We're going to miss, yeah, yeah. So the pool, we missed the budget because we had a lousy summer and we closed for a week.
Right.
And we're, you know, we're losing $10,000 a month for parking revenue every month that we're not collecting, and, you know, so there's
Have you seen, you haven't gotten our sales tax? I mean, you won't get July
Well, July, August, September, I'll get it the middle of November.
Yeah, so we won't really see what the impact is.
But of course, that, and that's capital, that's not, that's not general fund anyway, so, but
I mean, we're in a, we're in a much better position than some of our neighboring municipalities. We had a, we had a sizable fund balance, so that helped. And it doesn't make the pain go away, but it makes it a little bit lesser. But yeah, it'll be, it'll be challenging, and really, the revenue is really on the property tax side, but the parking, the pool, we probably wouldn't have felt as painfully if that was the only issue, but on top of everything else, it will just add to the already sizable hole.
I get it.
Do we know what we have collected for parking, even though we have suspended parking? I know, I've seen people putting money in the meters frequently, so I was just curious if we had an estimate as far as how much has actually been put in there?
I don't have an estimate.
We've, you know, we get meter coinage, we collect on a monthly, well, we collect it more often than that, but it gets cashed in on a monthly basis, and then we get a report. I mean, I know what we, you know, I don't have it right in front of me. We collected, I don't know, a few thousand dollars in, during the month of July, and my guess is it'll be the same kind of thing during the month of August before we get back into the usual, when we're doing. But in addition to meter coinage, we also aren't writing tickets.
Right.
So we also aren't collecting ticket revenue too, so. They're not huge amounts of money, but it all goes to the bottom line. You know, obviously, the biggest impact will be the abatement of taxes.
And on the, I know it's not general fund, but the water, water bill abatements totaled, I believe, $52,000 for this first round, so it's enterprise fund, it's, and the water fund was doing generally okay, but it's just another, just another hit. Next slide. And just some final odds and ends that didn't fit neatly on any other slide. But the FEMA Disaster Recovery Center remains staged at the auditorium. They're open seven days a week, 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, so just continue to encourage people to talk to FEMA. If you haven't been there, it's worth looking at, it's quite an operation. They have a lot of people deployed here to help our residents, so I really encourage people to go up there, you can talk to a human instead of on the phone or an email, so just a really great resource that I hope residents can take advantage of. They're here currently through September 9th. Parking meter enforcement, we just talked about this a little bit, but last week we announced that it's going to resume on Tuesday, September 5th. So if you CD on Tuesday, September 5th, run to your car. She will get you. She's been, we've been keeping her busy writing tickets around the office just to keep her muscle memory working. And then I mentioned this earlier, but the rehabilitation of the old police department, the backside of City Hall continues, and this will host the one-stop resource center, and we talked about Counsel Stockwell, and like I said, that'll be really a place for the Capstones of the world, the Good Sam's of the world, Washington County Mental Health, Mosaic, just the litany of providers that we know are there for residents will have a physical space to be in one spot, so people just have to come here. And that's expected to launch mid-September, and looking forward to that being open. So I believe that is, that is it, so.
Questions? So I know that the city did a great job with having volunteers come in. I know Mr. Jacobs did a wonderful job as well, as well as so many. Is it possible that now that we have that session, I don't want to say over, but just kind of closed out, that we as a council can kind of get a breakdown and see, you know, how many people were out on particular Saturdays, to see maybe what kind of jobs they were doing? Just to, I think, to put that in a positive light, to see where things are, to say, look, we are very strong, and I'd like to see that, and really see some quantifiable numbers, because I know I've seen hundreds of people all over the place between, you know, the last eight weeks or two months, or however long this mesh of time has been. But it's been amazing, but I'd like to see some numbers to it, to kind of put that out there and say, look, you know, great job, people, you know, really thank you for your work, you know, it's, it, just to put a good You know, it's, it, just to put a good positive end light on that and continue to move forward in a positive way.
Yeah, we're happy to do that. We've been tracking it. It'll help us with, with our FEMA applications as well as in-kind, so happy to get a quantification. But it's been, you know, as I've said to people, we wouldn't be where we are today if it wasn't for the, the many volunteers that have stepped up and done so much work. And just even this last weekend, you could tell, really tell the difference of the work there. You see it coming into the city with the work the governor's team did at Denton Park, like it already, it helps, right, to just see it not full of dirt, but with the hay ready for the grass to come in. It just psychologically also helps, so.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Do you have an idea when the lights are going to be modified on Air Street?
They're going to have a two-day study, so it should be, they should be able to get in their final stage by next week.
Okay. And-
Air Street light?
Yeah.
Actually, the study, I think, happens tomorrow, first day of school.
Yes. It's, and it's a two-day-
And I'm scared.
Yeah, we have, the chief vail has alerted his patrol officers to be in the area monitoring because we expect-
Thank you.
We expect it to be a challenge. And it'll be a two-day study, so we will make adjustments after we're able to get that data.
And I know that I've been annoying you about it, but I'm going to ask, water flushing?
Oh, yes. Water flushing ended yesterday and it is, so the staff was able to, I actually got an update, council, because I thought you might ask. The cruise finished yesterday. There's some isolated parts of the city that continue to have some, some tinted water and they just will require a little bit more time. Just to give you an example, the water treatment staff was out at a home that reported continuing yellow water. They tested it at the home, came back with no contaminants, so that's good. They also went to check the hydrant that fed, you know, that was in the area of the home. The water was coming clear, crystal clear out of that hydrant. So it's lingering issues. We know it's, it's an annoyance and a disruption for, for the people that it continues, but the flushing has ended. You know, I think if there's, the staff has been monitoring, they'll continue to monitor it. Now that the flushing's over, if we see residual yellowing, we'll, we'll sort of escalate and that escalation is like a draining of a tank where the issues are, where the issues may be coming from. So, you know, I-
You seem local to a neighborhood or, I mean, I'm hearing about, I've heard from individual homeowners, but I can't, but they're never in the same neighborhood. They're like individual homes.
It's, it's very isolated. I don't think it's, I don't think it's, it's any particular area. It's just very isolated incidents right now. And so the staff, they'll go out and they'll test if they, if they get some continuing yellowing in the water right now, but it's-
And if they really want to run their water a lot, we authorize you and Clint to abate high-water usage. So even if they want it, and I'm sure if a homeowner called Clint first and said, look, I've just had brown water, I'm going to turn my tub on and just-
Right.
Let it run for about eight hours. I mean, Clint will know in advance and he can, and he's really good about that. I'm amazed at-
Yeah.
How much detail he retains.
Yep. Yeah, they'll, we'll continue to get water readings and I think if Clint's seeing the upticks, he's, he's very good about, as you said, flagging any anomalies. So if they're, if they sort of trigger a need for an abatement, that would qualify under the existing authority to do so. But yeah, they, the water staff, you know, they've been very diligent about going out to locations where they've been called and, like I said, doing this testing at this particular home where the test at the home was fine, which is what we want to hear is happening. And then right outside at the hydrant, it's clear. So it's really an isolated minor issue. I know that it requires a little bit more waiting, but it's, it's unfortunately the least invasive option at the moment. But they will escalate if this doesn't, now that the flushing is done, they will escalate if this continues.
Thank you.
Councilor Dearing?
So if I encounter, or I should say, when I encounter other residents that are having yellow water issues, what would be the process that I should direct them to follow?
You can have them call the, you can, call Clint is probably the easiest option, the water department, and, and it'll get triaged from there.
Okay. So call Clint and Clint will triage you from there?
Yep.
Awesome.
And you can, I mean, I hate to say this, but you can always just send them directly to me too and we'll make, we'll take care of it.
Well, if I don't have to send them to you, I'd rather not bury you in those things. But, you know, I do have some residents that have had those concerns. And I, I try to stay off social media as much as possible, but see a lot of that stuff too. So I just want to kind of make sure that I know the right way to tell people to go about things.
Absolutely. And I, I can't emphasize enough how I know how much of a disruption, annoyance, I don't know what the right word is, it's an inconvenience. What we've been focusing on is making sure it's safe, which it is. We've done, we had done over 40 tests at this, well over 40 tests at this point. So the important thing is that the water is safe. It looks, I know how it looks and I know that it's not appealing how it looks, but it's safe, which is the important thing. And hopefully after this flushing is finished, it'll, it'll finally get to the place where we were pre-flood.
Sure. Thank you so much for your time.
All right. No additional questions. Moving on to upcoming business. And no, nothing? We're good?
Nothing.
Okay.
The agenda will happen.
Don't do anything.
It'll be long.
Moving, moving on to roundtable. Councilor Stockwell?
I've had a couple complaints about 62, especially the lower part of 62 coming up to the light. And I was thinking about, can be, I know that Berlin City Police or Berlin Police monitor the upper part of 62, but it doesn't seem like anybody monitors the speed on the lower part. So the noise is an issue, the speeding is an issue, and the general care of that median strips and that interruption is terrible. And so that's a real quality of life for people in that neighborhood. And that's something that if we apply some pressure to Vtrans or just request, they do a study, they keep the traffic down, there's some way of monitoring, at least a little thing that says, you are speeding now. This is a residential neighborhood. Don't drive over the lawn into somebody's house.
The little things.
The little thing, yeah.
And some noise screening for the lower part of a railroad street, I guess lower and upper is not a good term, but anyway, the lower part of railroad street, there's no trees there. So when people are zooming up, when the motorcycles are zooming up, people can't sit out on their porch and have a conversation.
Yeah, so we are, I know we're going to talk to the state about the mowing issue, which is their, their responsibility there. And I'll talk to chief vail about making sure that that's included in some of the traffic control patrols.
Is there a way to do that? Because I know, like, there's no easy place to pull off to monitor that.
They'll find a place.
Sit in the median.
They'll find a place, yeah.
Sit in the median.
They're pretty-
They're creative?
They're creative, yeah.
Can you let me know when? Councilor Chambert?
I pass.
Councilor Dearing?
Man, I'm happy to be back in chambers. I apologize for missing last week's meeting and just spent the last two weeks in what we call in football, hell week, hell weeks, where we do straight football training camp for two weeks, have 114 young kids from first grade all the way up to eighth grade. We spent this last Saturday playing a jamboree. Each team played three games. So we had over 100 Berry kids playing over in Essex against various teams. And Berry represented very well, respectfully, with sportsmanship, with compassion, and also showed some real good football. We are having our first home game this Saturday. We'll be starting at 8 o'clock in the morning. Another game will be at 9:30. We'll have another game after that with the Flag Kids. I believe that's at 11:00 and then another game after that. So feel free to come on up to Bond Field this weekend on Saturday and sports kids. When you drive by leaving at night and you see all the cars parked along Bond Field, you know those are all the kids having fun playing football. I'll pass to that.
All right. Councilor Roseon?
Thank you. You know, I'm all about the numbers, so I don't know if all of you saw the study that the poll, rather, that the University of New Hampshire did. There was a summary in Vermont Digger today. You know, pretty astounding. 13% of all Vermonters were affected on some level, either at work or at home, by the flood and sustained some sort of damage. And that's why the date, September 12th, is so important. That is the last day that people can apply for FEMA, and I'm sure people are tired of hearing us all preach it. But this is why I'm so concerned. 13% of all Vermonters is roughly 80,000 people. FEMA has not accepted applications from even 10,000 people. And my biggest concern, that is a hard, hard date. You could be up against the most heartbreaking case in the world in terms of loss, and if they apply on the 13th of September, it is too late. The 12th is a hard date. So just tell all your friends, tell all your neighbors, if you know of anyone. And, and some people, you know, you pay your taxes, you're a citizen of this country. That's, that's one of the, it's one of the, the primary reasons why government exists, to help people when they're hurting. And I know there are some people who feel like it's some sort of handout and charity and somehow they're above it. No one is above it. You're a citizen of this country. Everyone is afforded that same opportunity. And like I said, when I see roughly, and, and, you know, again, you extrapolate these numbers, when I see 80,000 people affected, 13% of the 600,000 person population, and less than 10,000 people applying for FEMA benefits, and the governor, you know, when I was speaking with the governor about that this weekend, he agreed. He said, there just seems to be a huge disconnect. We don't think enough people are applying for assistance who, who need it and who deserve it. So tell all your friends, you'll see it on, I'll be pushing that on social media until the 13th of September, so I'll apologize in advance. But if you have been harmed, if you had sustained damage, please go to the FEMA webpage, go right up here to the BOR, they really are wonderful people, and make sure you apply. With that, I'm all set. Thank you.
Pass.
All right. You said what I was going to say about September 12th, so yeah, very important. That is a deadline and hopefully folks apply beforehand because you can afterwards. With that, we have an executive session for collective bargain, bargaining.
Move for findings.
And real estate, right?
Nope, no real estate.
I was just checking, yeah.
And Councilor Roseon made a motion for findings. Is there a second with Stockwell and discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion to go into executive session.
And invite the manager.
And invite the manager.
So moved?
Second.
All right, discussion?
No action expected, David.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? We are in executive session.
Thank you.
One second.
Thank you.
Almost in executive session.
Almost, almost.